Thank you, Brian.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to see everyone on this Zoom meeting. We are all gathered to do Zoom today. We were not sure exactly what our logistics were going to be because of the snow. Our streaming service, of course, was not able to make it physically here, so we're doing everything electronically in a distanced fashion. But we do have all three commissioners with us today. And we also have our colleague, Robert Horton, our Economic Development Director, is with us with an exciting announcement to talk about the SOAR Business Park. But we do want to go ahead and move ahead with our, our meeting today. And if we would rise and face the flag, if we could, Kathy, if you would, please do the pledge this morning, if you could.
Thank you. I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
In two hundred and thirty-three, which will change one nation under God.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for safety, that we can be able to travel to work. We pray for safety of all those that are working today. Those that are working to get our roads cleared. We pray for every one of them. We pray for our first responders who are out in this weather. We pray that you keep them safe. We pray for every citizen. And Lord, we pray for every situation today. And Lord, we just thank you, God, for your abundant grace. We ask God that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions for this county. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus and everybody said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, all right. We need to move to approve the minutes of February the fourth is submitted. I hope that everyone has had a chance to review those minutes. And would we have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Powell and a second by Mrs. Coleman.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution, renewing the agreement between the Board of Souda County Commissioners and the City of Portsmouth regarding consent representation agreement.
On items two and three, I'll go ahead and explain. We always do an annual renewal on indigenous defense representation. We help the city of Portsmouth and the village of New Boston, which both have courts to help them with the indigenous defense costs. This has been an ongoing agreement that's been going on for many, many years. So with that, are there any questions or comments in regards to item two? Hearing none.
I make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of resolution, renewing the agreement between the Board of Souda County Commissioners and the Village of New Boston regarding the indigenous representation agreement.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none.
I make the motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item five today? Hearing none.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item six today? Hearing none.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of 2020 County Highway System Mileage Certification from the Souda County Engineer.
This particular item has to do with the certification of the actual miles, county miles in Souda County. And this is used to determine state funding and also grant funding for the year 2020. Is that 2020 or 2021, Jen?
Twenty twenty-one, sorry.
Okay, all righty. So this will be for 2021 County Highway System Mileage Certification. The number of centerline miles for county roads is 415.15 miles, or roughly the distance from here to Raleigh, North Carolina, if anybody was wondering. Are there any questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none.
I move that we approve the mileage certification.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution, authorizing the Souda County Commissioners to contribute matching funds to the Souda County Engineer regarding OPWC Grant Hot Mix Asphalt Paving.
As, as both of you have seen already, we received correspondence from our county engineer, Darren LeBrun, who has been working very hard on keeping the roads up to par, the county roads. And because of the expense, the extra expense now at the tune of around eighty thousand mi- I'm sorry, eighty thousand dollars a mile for hot mix paving. It is becoming more and more important for him to keep that pace as far as the number of miles that they pay per year. And in 2017, 2018, I'm sorry, 2018 and 2019, we contributed up to three hundred thousand dollars two years in a row. And last year, Mr. LeBrun didn't ask, mainly because of the pandemic, the uncertainty of the county budget, and, and the fact that their schedules were so messed up. There were just a lot of reasons why. But he has came back to us and said, in order for me to stay up to par, to keep things on schedule and to keep the county roads in good shape, he has asked for us to assist him with matching funds for the grants that he applies for. OPWC, these are, these are all the type of grants that he applies for. And, and, you know, it turns one dollar to two dollars. It's that kind of a deal. So he has asked us in writing to consider that. This would be for the next two years, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And, and then he would take those monies and they would be used toward paving projects. He's also, he also let me know that in 2021, their department, the County Engineers Office, will be overseeing somewhere between eight and nine million dollars in projects in Souda County, which is a huge amount of jobs. That includes bridges, culverts, paving. That's just some of the few, few of the things that they do. But that is a large amount of projects that they'll be doing in 2021. So we're going to be seeing a lot of that happening. But is there any comments or questions in regards to that from the commissioners?
I, I would just add that, you know, Darren's doing a great job. And any, anytime we can leverage our financial standing to assist with any of these grants, it's, it's kind of a no brainer. Eight to nine million dollars in projects is huge. And, you know, the extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year hopefully goes a long way toward that as well.
Well, Scotty, you bring up a great point. You know, without having money, without having our reserves, without having carryovers, it is literally impossible to go out and get these grants. There's no matching funds. And the, with that, other counties are going to go get those funds. They're going to, you know, qualify. And we're going to be left out in the cold. And that's one reason why having a fiscally conservative budget and being on top of this and, and really making sure that we have reserves has really benefited Souda County in a big way over the last six years. And, and we're, we're seeing some really great things happen as a result of that. So you hit the nail on the head there. Kathy, would you have anything?
No, I, I, nothing more than that. Sorry, I've been out of the work that the engineer is doing, Darren LeBrun is doing. Couldn't ask for more from me than a big job.
Okay, well, if there's no other further questions or comments, can we have a vote?
I will make the motion to adopt the resolution.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Souda County Sheriff's Office and the Souda County Department of Job and Family Services.
On the item nine, they currently have a deputy in the department over there. When you walk in, right to the left, I believe it's Deputy Wilson is in that seat. Done a wonderful job over there. It's nice to have a deputy on site at JNFs. Would there be any questions or comments in regards to this contract? It is simply, I believe, this is a renewal, is it not, Jen? Yes, okay. Hearing none.
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the miscellaneous reports on item ten? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
I will second.
Coleman.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution, congratulating Naomi R. Brown on her retirement from Souda County Job and Family Services.
We want to, today, if we vote in accordance, we have a individual, wonderful individual retiring from a job in family services. Actually, she's, she's been over there for eight years at JFS, but she's got over twenty years in public service. And she'll be retiring. And this is a resolution congratulating her on her retirement from public service. Would we have a motion to do so?
I will make the motion to adopt.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Souda County Engineer and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council Eight, Local Thirty-Fifty-four.
I, I assume each one of you have had time to look over the contract on item twelve. This is with Ask Me Local Thirteen Fifty-four. This is for the engineer, the county engineer. I believe it is a three-year contract. I believe it's a reopener in the fourth year, is it not? That's the way I read it. And it does cover the wage rates for the first three. With that, I think it is a three-year contract. I'm sorry, with a wait opener after that. Are there any questions or comments in regards to that? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of accepting an amended certificate for statute commission.
Any questions or comments in regards to item thirteen? Hearing none.
I'll move that we accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of memorandum from the sanitary engineer regarding certification of unpaid sewer rates and charges.
Any questions or comments in regards to item fourteen? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of reappointment to the Airport Authority Board.
On item fifteen, Angie Khan has expressed her interest in staying on the board. Angie has done a wonderful job on that board. And I know her fellow board members really enjoy her being there. So is there any discussion, any comments in regards to item fifteen? Hearing none.
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then announced certificates in a total amount of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and ten cents.
Any questions or comments in regards to item sixteen? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of authorizing the clerk to advertise a notice to bidders for 2021 hot mix materials regarding the Souda County Engineer.
Any questions or comments in regards to the authorization for the clerk to advertise notice bidders for hot mix for the engineer? Hearing none.
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of amended, amended addendum to contract agreement regarding the Souda County Sheriff's Office and the Washington Nile Local School District.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to I eighteen? That was literally a date issue on the contract. It needed to be clarified that it was for 2021 through 22. I believe it was 2020 through 2021. They had to revise that. So that's the purpose for the addendum. Hearing none.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of access Souda County 2021 CARES Act capital replacement, monthly invoice, charter service, and incidental certification.
Any questions or comments in regards to number nineteen? Hearing none.
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution, authorizing the chairman of the Board of Souda County Commissioners to file applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants to the US DOT Federal Transit Administration as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified, forty-nine USC Section Fifty-three Eleven Formula Grants for Rural Areas, forty-nine USC Section Fifty-three Thirty-nine Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Grants, the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistant Program, Ohio Public Transportation Program, the Ohio Transit Partnership Program, executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval.
On item twenty, is that twenty or nineteen? It's twenty, right? Okay, this has to do with the ODOT grant applications. Don't ask how many they, how much we get because we don't know. We have to apply. So this is basically for the ASC service. It's a very important grant. We apply every year. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get it. But this is authorization to move forward with that grant process. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of communication from the sanitary engineer regarding customer reimbursements.
On item twenty-one, there was a gentleman needing a reimbursement. His property was actually sold and he was still getting the bill. There was an overpayment of twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Are there any questions in regards to this request for reimbursement? Twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
The only comment I would make on this is if we could look at maybe a future resolution to empower the sanitary engineer to just handle these up to a certain amount, whatever that dollar amount would be. That way, we can get money back to the customers sooner versus coming through this body. If that's something we can do, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's something, it's a good idea, Scotty. And what we can do is we can ask our legal counsel to see if there's any way we can do a blanket resolution. Most of these are below a hundred dollars. Most of them are not, there's no controversial reason. It's either they've moved or something's, some, some things transpired with the property. So I think that's a great idea. We could have our clerk get with our assistant prosecutor, Ms. Parker, and find out if that's something that we can do and we can, we can act on that at a later date. So clerk, Jen, would that be okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, great. All right. Good, good idea, Scotty. All right. Are there any other questions on the agenda?
We didn't bet on it.
Oh, we didn't. I'm so sorry.
I'll move that we approve. I'll move.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Coleman, would you have anything else?
Again, I, I just want to wish Mrs. Brown best of luck with her retirement. I hope she's got a great big bucket list she wants to complete and enjoys doing that.
Good deal. Mr. Powell.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, we, before we start taking questions from the press, because the press may just have some questions in regards to what we have. Mr. Robert Horton joining us today. And of course, Robert is our director of the Economic Development here in Souda County. And as some will notice or know already, there was an announcement made earlier this week, actually yesterday. It made the rounds in the press that Souda County, the commissioners have made quite a commitment toward economic development in our county, leading up to this, working on multiple infrastructure projects and multiple, you know, building the SOAR Business Park, getting it off the ground. And now we're, we're going to the next level. And Robert, you're online today with us. And behind you, there is a sketch drawing of what we're about to embark on. And publicly, we want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication that's got us to this point. You know, it takes a long time when you're dealing with grant cycles and dealing with, with all kinds of different entities to try to bring everybody together. It's not as easy as just walking out in the field saying, hey, let's build this. And it's not. It takes a lot of work to get the infrastructure in place. And it's not. It takes a lot of work to get the infrastructure in place and then actually put the plan together to fund a project of this type. So with that, I'm not going to steal your thunder, Robert. I'm going to have you go ahead and tell us what's going on out at SOAR and express to the citizens of Sodom County the greatness of what's to come.
Well, as you said, mine, you know, it takes a lot of work and it takes time. It surely does. I mean, we've been working on the SOAR business part since I started. That's four years. And we slowly, surely have got it in place. Got our road started, actually two-thirds of the Bartho extension is in place and paved. And we still continue working on the latter part of that. This building, we've been looking at for a while and been working with a lot of departments, State Park, ODSA, Jobs Ohio, Ohio Southeast. And we put this project together, took a little while to design it. We designed it to hopefully capture the broadest market of base. We didn't want to build it and be locked into a particular type of industry or except manufacturing. It can accept distribution. It can be subdivided. It's 42,000 square foot warehouse with a 3,000 square foot office. It is designed that if somebody comes in and only wants half of the put a dividing wall between the two loading ramps, which have two dock doors for each ramp. With this building in half, this end wall, our side wall on this end of the building is also already pre-designed. If that happens, it will accept another office extension on that end. So we have hopefully we'll get one nice sized business to take the whole thing. But I didn't one, one market. I wanted to be broad. On the back end wall, we've even designed a framed opening in it. It was seated and covered when we built it to begin with. But if we continue our conversations with Marshall, Robert C. Byrd with Air Aviation Endeavors down there, we've already had several meetings with them. That end wall is already pre-designed for a security hanger door that we can put in later. I don't know any other way to capture any more market than that. Now, a 34-foot eve height on the main warehouse, which will also accept most of your major brands. A distribution facility and you want to put a racking system in it. It's already got a clear height in it. It's also designed, pre-designed, the columns are already pre-designed and will have haunches in place down both sides of this building. And you'll be able to put in if you want, you got a 20-ton rail crane on each side. So this building will take two 20-ton rail cranes that will run the if need be. Concrete floor, wrestled with a little bit. We've designed it eight inches thick so it can heavy stuff. The office, it's a 3,000 square foot office. That concrete is just four, is four inches thick because but it's, it's an awesome building. It really is. And we're well underway with it. We've structured it and before I go further, you know, you said you didn't want to take my thunder, but oh, sorry about that, guys. But this isn't just my thunder. This would not be done, Scotty, and not be happening to the plate like you did. I am grateful for that. This is, this is what I hope our future in Sodom County looks like. And we continue to do this. That part is an awesome part, a lot of business parts through the United States. And it is strategically positioned, legit. Out there and it's a great mix. And this isn't the only project. I've got four other projects and two other investors in the last three weeks that want to go to the airport. Met them out there already. So it's on fire. It's starting to happen. It's very exciting. And we couldn't be doing this, I don't think, at a better time. Hopefully we get a handle on it with our vaccine and it's going to come around. And I'll tell you, our economy, I think it's time to be wide open. We've done, with economic development, in the last two months, we've done three RFI's with Jobs Ohio for the heavy industrial corridor along with this. Things are picking up. And two of those, two of those that we did were wanting this building, but I didn't have it built. So we couldn't submit them. One of them went up north and the other one went to the east. So one was looking for a 40,000 square footer. As I said, we're 42,000 and we're 3,000 office. The other one was looking for a 4,000 square footer. And with that being said, you're going, why did you just do four? Also in this design, end walls of each side of this building. So all we have to do is take the sheets off, order the steel, and I can continue this building this way. And I can continue it that way. We can expand this on the five acre lot that we're on up to right out of 80,000 square foot building if need be. So it is exciting. It's, like I said, the commissioners are standing behind it. They're, you know, they've asked SOPA to build it for them. SOPA has already agreed, done their resolutions to get that underway. Already contacted our attorneys. The bonds are already written up as we speak. Non-taxable revenue bonds. The bonding agent has he's already got a buyer for the bonds. They're putting the final paperwork together now. Just received the preliminary. I'll get it in front of you guys. That's well underway. We've submitted also to ODSA. That's Ohio. Hold on.
Development Service Agency.
Service Agent, right, right. We've talked with Portman up there and a couple of others. Got our application in place. That for the R.I.P.L., the Rural Industrial Park Program. And that program allows you to, to request up to 2.6 million dollars. I'm sorry, 2.5 million dollars in loan. Or 50% of the cost to build. So in other words, the 2.5 is a maximum. So 5.3 million. I'm asking for the it is being reviewed as we speak. And if we receive it, what that'll do is when we finish, it's a reimbursable type loan, when we finish building this, they'll give us that 2.5. That 2.5 will pay down the bonding. 2.5 million. Then what happens after that is ODSA comes back to us and says, oh, by the way, we're going to forgive up to 50% of that loan as a grant. We could realize one and a quarter million dollars as a grant that just goes to favor. That is huge in development. It is. I never had an opportunity like that in some of my endeavors. Would have jumped all over it. We've also submitted Ohio Southeast and Jobs Ohio OSEP application. Infrastructure. Ohio site infrastructure grant that they do with that. And so another program that Jobs Ohio hadn't had out a very long time, but they're doing real good. It's a great program. The grant funding for a substantial amount on our and some of our that grant has already been submitted and we've gotten confirmation. They've got it and it's under as we speak. And then first of next week, we're also submitting for grant funding as the partners with the Fluor money also. So there's a lot in it. It is. It's been, it's been crazy. But I'm excited. And again, I can't thank you enough. It's an awesome project. Get this thing leased or sold, whichever way we prefer to go and go on to the next one. Y'all have any questions?
No questions, but need comment. I came in about a year after I came in and I it's been so frustrating because I've watched, take three steps and not back four. All the work you've done. I'm really impressed with the spec building, how you thought it we can maximize its use and add on if we need to be. So a job well done, Robert.
Thank you, Kat. I appreciate that. It's been my pleasure. That's why I took this position. I want nothing but the best for the citizens of this county. I've been on the road for 36 solid years. I've given my services to countless people in 25 states. And although gratifying, you don't you go and you do that project, you don't see that project usually again unless some weird chance you happen to drive by five states away. But here, I'm able to do something. My wife and I chose to live here almost 10 years ago, 10, 11 years ago, when I built the project. And I see the potential. I've developed half my life. I've built since I can remember. And Portsmouth County, I truly believe in my heart, is a gem. It just needs to be shined up a little bit. We've missed it for a long time. We really have. But it is a gem. If we all come together on that common ground, I don't see an end to what we can do with Portsmouth and Sodom County. Centrally located, logistics unbelievable. You've got 90% or more of the U.S. population within an eight-hour driving time from this, from right here. And we've got a great park out there. I just hope in about three or four years, I'm looking at you guys going, hey, we need to go find another farm. We need another, you know, another park. And that could easily happen as long as we keep them we all work together, we show people that want to come here that we are strong. You know, we're diverse and we can work together, especially with developers and investors in that we will do everything we can to put their projects in a fast track manner. We can sit there with that dirt out there forever and go, oh, we got a place for you to build. That's not the way it works anymore. Other counties, and it's not United States. Selectors are asking for pre-built buildings. They're not asking to wait. Able to move and it's so fast track today. But at the same time, we got to make it easier being able to meet with the commissioners, being able, being able to meet with the people that needs to make it happen and having a smooth transition for them to get their projects permitted off the ground and moving. That's huge. And if you don't do it, believe me. For back, I've seen it just in the four years I'm being here. You've got five counties right around you that are doing it already. And you eggs, they're already doing their fourth step. So I mean, it's, it's great. It's great. I'm tickled to death that you guys are behind this and see it. I know you've seen it a long time. And like Brian said, it has. And he knows me. I get frustrated. I came from the, you know, from the private side and we're just get a permit and go to work.
Yeah.
You know, you didn't work, you didn't, you didn't worry about putting other funding with it. You went, got your conventional construction note and you went to work. And so I have, I've had a little trouble with that, you know, waiting.
We've all had that problem.
But maybe that's a good thing because it makes me put
Yeah.
This is, this is a huge step for Sodom County moving toward the future. I think it's going to continue in a big way. I really do. I really do.
Well, Robert, we thank you. Robert, we thank you for your work, everything that you've done. I'm looking forward to new manufacturing, new jobs, whatever may come out there. We don't know, but we're going to have the product, as they call it in economic development in the world, to be able to sell to somebody. And that means jobs for not only now, but for generations to come, long after we're gone. And we'll be able to know that we left for better than we found it and we'll have an opportunity for generations to come to have jobs. And you know, with you coming on today, Robert, we appreciate that because, you know, it cuts down on some of the claptrap that might occur. Because people don't necessarily know. And unfortunately, if they don't know and they don't hear it from the horse's mouth, they make it up. So we would prefer to get it out there to let people know what's going on. And if there's anybody that has any questions, feel free to call. We're more than happy for those questions as well as Robert. And we're going to be turning around in the spring and we're excited.
That's it. Yep. And same here, Brian. My, you know, my office door is open all the time. So, you know, we're in a point on a project, I'll tell you all I can about it. If we're in a point that we can't disclose all of, I'll still tell you what I can about it. But we got a lot going on and it's exciting. So that door is anyone, any I do not turn anybody down.
Great. Great.
This is a pre-manufactured metal building. We got site work. We got concrete. We got asphalt. A little bit of finished work inside, but little office there, HVAC. Please contact me at robert.horton, H-O-R-T-O-N, at Sodom County, one word, all lowercase, dot net. We are, we are talking stage. Are getting some, some ideas of what they're doing, you know, what we need. Are getting some ideas of what they're doing, you know, what we need, what they need to get it done. We should be turning engineering loose on it, I'm hoping, by middle of next week. But in the meantime, I have, you know, I have some poor plans, and I have enough that on that particular building, most subs can do a scope. All right?
Is there any questions or comments from the press?
We do not have any as of yet, no.
Do we get a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye. Thank you, everyone, and God bless, and stay safe out there.